Please let them break their floorboard windows with exception of Mr. Zado, our president. Announcements? Any members of the board of education to speak on an agenda? Can I motion for the approval of minutes to maintain your back? Aye. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion against. Okay, recognition.
Good evening. On behalf of the Board of Education, it gives me great pleasure to recognize the all varsity student athletes who have earned all county honors in their sports, recognized by their respective coaches associations. What game plan is when I recognize you, when I call you, please come forward, student athletes that are able to join us here tonight, to come up on the stage and be recognized. We'll start out with our girls varsity gymnastics team earning all county honors. We have Kimberly Arena, Emily McGrane, Delaney Rivera, Alyssa Wolfman, and Avery Alessi. Congratulations to all counties. All county gymnastics, moving forward. All county girls varsity tennis, Leanna Paulson. Come on forward. You are here. Very busy schedules. Being recognized, all county girls varsity soccer. We have Morgan Ayatona, Melissa Corey, and Lauren Schmidt. For boys varsity soccer, all county, Tom Parson. Academic, all county, Josh Young. Girls varsity cross country, all county, Claire Clements. Boys varsity volleyball, all county, Anthony D'Amio. All county varsity football, Tim Mullane, Mike Ladonna, Kyle Pat, Joe Rota, and Anthony Jim Dina. All county, Riley Wallace. In varsity field hockey. All county, I will mention, Emily Vicki. And varsity boys, y'all, all county, gentleman who puts all our golf games to shame, Mr. Joe Tamaro. I'm also happy to say that many of the student athletes in front of you were vital contributors to their team's academic success, being recognized by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association as members of a stellar athlete team. We had nine of our 12 varsity teams recognized as stellar athlete teams, which means 75% or more of the members averages have to be 90 or higher. When we looked at our GPAs, all 12 varsity ball teams, it just came out to 90, the 89.7 average. So congratulations to all our student athletes on the recognition, and particularly here tonight are all county performers. Congratulations.
Congratulations again to all of our unreads and Miss Burns personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Gillis. Have motion for the approval of the South Bear Leave of Act since the civilian meals, mental education effective November 27, 2017.
A motion. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion against.
Have motion for the approval of the substitute nurses as listed in your backup.
A motion. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion against.
Have motion for the approval of the club advisors for the 2017-18 school year as listed in your backup.
A motion. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion against.
Have motion for the approval of the home band instructors as listed in your backup.
A motion. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion against.
Have motion for the approval of the substitute teachers as listed in your backup.
A motion. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion against.
Have motion for the approval of Dawn Fizudo, permanent substitute effective December 18, 2017.
A motion. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion against.
Have motion for the approval of the substitute teaching assistants as listed in your backup.
A motion. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion against. Thank you, Miss Burns. And Dr. Rowland. It's working well.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Last Friday was our superintendent's conference day, and in compliance with our New York State Education Department guidelines for superintendent's conference day, we had elementary staff, we had our teacher conferences while middle, high school faculty were engaged in professional development. We provided EdCamp formats for this, for our workshops. We included Google Classroom, Google Collaboration, creating digital escape rooms using Twitter to build your own personal learning community, GoGuardian as an instructional tool, EdPuzzle, Research, HyperDox, Apps and Extension, Smart Learning Suite Online, Flipping the Classroom, and enhancing the security council and program technology. We just wanted to thank also Bay Shore School District who came in to share some of the things that they're doing in their district. On December 11th, some of our students at Udonro Middle School had the pleasure of interacting with the Google Expedition Authentic Reality Pioneer Program. And this was part of a grant award that Mr. Taylor, the Director of Science and Engineering, worked with Dr. Markwood, the principal of Udonro Middle School, to provide to our students. Our students had an opportunity to engage in the Pioneer Program, which uses Google Tangle technology to effectively scan and map the physical classroom and accurately project 3D models throughout it. The students then use specialized devices and positional tracking to walk around the objects and view them from any angle they wish. This technology allows the teachers not only to further engage with their students, but lets the students interact and share experiences, as they do. The select teachers in all three grade levels participated in the Pioneer Program and then used images from probability and the faces of the moon to historic Pompeii and the human circulatory system. In one class, a student got a close-up look at the ventricles of a beating heart and how some tackle layers are so small that red blood cells have to flow through them one at a time. In another class, students viewed a 360-degree Roman pound scene, as well as armor and a chariot used in warfare. At the conclusion of the lesson, the students and teachers had the opportunity to provide direct feedback to the representative from Google Expeditions Program with regard to how their application can further enhance the learning process. So we thought this was a great opportunity that we were able to take advantage of, and we'd like to again to thank Dr. Markwood for his help in facilitating this and Mr. Taylor also in getting us that award. And just wanted to share just some of the things that we're doing in our classrooms. During one of my visits to see an observation, I was in a kindergarten classroom. This is right before our Thanksgiving. The kindergarten students were just finishing up, being inspired by the artist, La Drian, who uses rectangles and primary colors to create his masterpieces. So they were inspired by this and created their own shapes through stamps with a cup and created circles, globes, and then learned about the secondary colors. And so they learned, you know, how to make sure how they can be effectively designing them, they can do beautiful portraits. They were very proud of themselves when you walked through the classroom, as they should have been. And I want to use this example to tell you how wonderful and special sometimes when I go through my job responsibilities, how I just get such a pleasure, joy out of that, and I want to share with you. So it was right before Thanksgiving, and the students were lining up, and they were very enthused about everything. They were so excited that I thought their artwork was so wonderful, and they were great artists and so ready for first grade. Happy Thanksgiving. They said back to me in unison, "Happy Thanksgiving." You know, I said, "Gobble, gobble, gobble," they did, "Be a turkey, shake your tail feathers," they did that. And off as they were leaving, a little boy said to me, "So what are you gonna do now? You gotta go back to work?" And it was one of those moments where I thought, "Yeah, what am I doing? This is what I do for a living." And it was just so special, and we just had such a great day. So they're doing wonderful, wonderful things in all of our classrooms, but these are just some of the special moments that these children just take with them for the rest of their lives. And just finally, I'd just like to wish everyone a very happy, safe holiday season, and a healthy new year.
Gobble, gobble.
Gobble, gobble, gobble.
Thanks, Dr. Rowland.
If I can get all of you to listen.
Okay. It's not on the agenda, but we did in fact have a board committee meeting and Miss McGinnis will discuss it.
Thank you. The board committee met on November 28th in the district office. We met with a partner from Morris Abrams, the United Ordinars, to review the financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2017. In attendance were Steve Geller and Marie LaRosa, Scott Brady, myself, Paul Mitchelloff, Kevin O'Connor, and Michael Zado, as well as Superintendent Burns, Wendy Duffy, and Dr. Rowland. It was noted that the 2016-17 financial statements reflected a positive position for the school district, that expenses were under budget and improvements were made to our reserve accounts. And our unassigned fund balance is at a permitted limit of 4% of the following year's budget, which is very good news. Mrs. Duffy explained that the district experienced some savings in several areas of the 16-17 budget. During the school year, there were items that were budgeted that we found a different way to fund those needs. For example, purchasing Chromebooks for the English department rather than purchasing textbooks and renewing the copy machine leased to the Voces rather than directly with a vendor were more cost-effective. These changes all resulted in cost savings. The district also realized savings in service fees for liability insurance, legal fees, utilities, student services, and other various expense items. And the district also refinanced its 2005 serial bond for savings of $200,000 of debt service costs. The final audit report reflected no material weakness in the internal control and no new order findings.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Mr. Mitchell, we'll discuss the meeting of finances.
Finance Committee met on... Finance Committee met on December 12th, 2017. Committee members present, Mr. Scott Brady, I'm Mr. McHale. All members in attendance, Steve Geller and Kevin O'Connor. Administrator President, Bernard Behrens, who attended, and Wendy Duffy, Assistant Superintendent for Business. Others present, June Mellon Treasurer, Dr. DeSalle, Curbs teenager, Pat Pompan, the Internal Claims Order. Purpose of the meeting was to review the warrants for the March discussion of fiscal matters. Meeting came to an order at 7:30 PM. Treasury Report, briefly discussed the school district funds for October 2017 and extracurricula for October 2017. They were presented and accepted by the committee. Payroll Summary Report was for October 2017, was presented and accepted by the committee. Financial statements for October 2017, for the period of 7/117 to 10/3117, were presented. The Internal Claims Order Report was presented and accepted by the committee. Assistant Managing Order Trail for October 2017 was presented and accepted by the committee. We had payroll certification for 11/317, 11/1717, and 12/117. It was presented and accepted by the committee. We had the review of warrants, which the Finance Committee received the warrants. We reviewed the board agenda finance items. We had the approval of budget transfers presented and accepted by the committee, the submission to the board. We also had the approval of surplus. In Udonro, we had various science books, in Beach Street, we had various science books. And we had the approval of the 2017-2018 health service contract that the Department Union Free School District had a resume amount of $4,755.70. We also had the approval of the 2017-2018 contract for the South Huntington Union Free School District. Wendy Duffy also reviewed with the committee the results of the bond refinance debate. The meeting was adjourned at 7:30 AM.
Thank you. And Mr. O'Connor will discuss the meeting of the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Geller. Good evening, everybody. Buildings and Grounds Committee met this past Tuesday here in District Office, with members present, myself, Mr. Brady, Mr. Mahalek. Other board members in attendance, Mr. Geller and Mr. McGinnis. Administrator President, Mrs. Burns, Dr. Rowland, Mr. Bossy, and Mrs. Duffy. Others present, representatives from VBS and SC-C. Items discussed primarily was an update on bond projects. We received an update on Phase 1, Phase 2A, Phase 2B of the bond project. Some of the items in those phases were roof replacement, gym floor replacement, gym wall padding replacement, new gym bleachers at the high school and middle schools, high school pool line installation, gym window replacement, gym wall padding, and the high school generator. Some of the highlights committee was very pleased to hear about is that the high school roof replacement that was scheduled to take place over two years was completed in one year. And in addition, we were pleased, excuse me, to hear that the majority of the projects so far from the bond are coming in under budget. We did discuss, part of the bond includes window screens at the middle school and the grade school. Each classroom's gonna get one screen, so the teachers can open it up, cool off the classrooms, and not have these commit all of the students disrupt the class. And the committee has approved and drawn two screens in each classroom and in each office in the middle school and the grade schools. And we asked Mr. Bossy to give us some feedback on what may or may not be needed in high school. Next, we discussed future phase of the bond project, which will be installation of security vestibules in all of our buildings, all school buildings, if that is. And the vestibules will include somewhat extensive construction at each building. You're gonna have new doors that you're gonna have to get buzzed in through. There will be a new security office in each building. You'll have to present ID, and then you'll be presented into the past and next doors into the school. They will be constructed at a significant security level. And we started to discuss, we've actually visited each grade school, and we've seen preliminary group prints of options. We've discussed which options are best. The committee will be visiting the middle schools and the high school in the near future, and we'll start looking at those too. And in future meetings, we will report back on where we're proceeding with that. Other information presented to the committee included the winter gym accessibility. We were very pleased that all organizations have requested space, and district gymnasiums have received this schedule for winter season. And lastly, we received an update that one of our tenants, Divine Rhythms, has agreed to pay for everything related to the installation of an air conditioning unit in Westport Cafeteria, and that includes an electric consumption meter. And the meeting during approximately 9:20 PM.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. If I could just clarify something, it's two screens per classroom and only one screen per office, per room.
Two hall screens.
That's twice our student's activity.
Mr. Brady will discuss the meeting of Safety.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Geller. So just bear with me, I left my eyes at home. So the... So the Safety and Security Committee meeting...
Hold on, hold on. No laughing at the whole people.
I smell some chills. So the committee meeting met Tuesday, December 12th, at Paul J. Blue at 8:30 AM. And members present, myself, Mrs. Burns, Dr. Rowland, Dr. Bridgeman, Mr. Moran, Mr. Manix Salko, Dr. Markwood, Dawn Morrison, Mr. Mullins, Andrew O'Farrell, our host, Rhonda Pratt, James Bossy, and our Security Director, Joe McElroy. So we discussed the regulations for rights to security cameras, and what that is, we... Along with some of the additional security cameras that have been installed in locations throughout the district, including foot bridges at the high school and Beach Street Middle School. The principals have provided other access areas of concern. Those areas will be reviewed and discussed, and cameras installed as the budget allows. This is always like a fluid type of thing, they'll always be constantly evaluating and reevaluating. And if necessary, we can get some more cameras or move cameras to new locations. As far as the regulations for the rights to the security, you know, the purpose of these regulations is to provide guidance for the use of the security cameras of property owned and or utilized by the district in a way that enhances the security while respecting the privacy expectations of members of the district community. The policy will be reviewed and revised as necessary by the Safety Committee annually or more frequently as circumstances require. We also discussed, obviously, our school grounds and facilities. So kind of did touch on that with the Buildings and Grounds Committee, where we discussed the pending security entrances for the buildings. It's quite extensive. There's a lot we discuss, how we wanna go about, you know, providing for the safety of all the employees as well as our students, obviously. And I want, I'm always impressed with all our administrators at these meetings because they're really passionate about this, and they're really, you know, overly, not overly, but they're very concerned about our student safety, and that's always nice to say, so. In any event, so we discussed some of those issues, as well as our fields and our grounds for our district properties. So we've had some incidents where during school hours, we have some, you know, community members on school grounds during school hours. And this is a little bit of concern to us, it's obviously a safety issue, we don't wanna have any problems. We love to welcome our community members on our school grounds, but just not during the school hours when school is in session. So it's a safety issue. So we've been discussing some of that, some new signage possibly for some of the field facilities, and some other possible outlets to get the community to have, you know, a better understanding of, you know, what's in the best interest of our students. And I believe that was it, meeting adjourned at 9:30 AM.
Thank you, Mr. Brady.
I'll just add, if you don't want my comments here, on the security of the school buildings and the speed at which I hope that we are able to accomplish the project as it is the anniversary of Sandy Hook shootings, that hurt five, six years ago. And that's been very topical lately. One of the things that I read today or heard today was truly how our teachers are now also the protectors of our children. And so I would even explore on the buildings and grounds and our committees that are designing the new foyers and security vestibules to use as much as possible.
Well, I think we have settled on designs for all four elementary school security vestibules, and we're moving ahead as quickly as possible. So we hope to get this discussion done this summer. That's the anniversary of the state. But as I'm bookended here, we are always at the anniversary of the state. SED, of course, is unimaginably slow in approving bond requests, construction requests. However, our architect, VBS, is trying to expedite as best as possible. They are very aware of our, you know, wishes here.
And Mr. Geller, in report, with just everyone's education, all the buildings, the committee has approved of the PNC grade level bullet-resistant glass and doors. So, you know, we are taking security very seriously, but that doesn't...
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. LaRosa will discuss the committee on Special Ed, Free School Special.
Okay, sure. Good evening, everyone. Merry Christmas, happy holidays to all. Today, we met with Jean Dowling, as is myself, Ron McGinnis, and the Administrative President for Director of Special Education, Jean Dowling, and Dr. Darwin. We reviewed all of the CPFC recommendations and found everything to be in order. Ms. Dowling also outlined for us the current state of special education and the issues that we need to be aware of. And the meeting was adjourned at 8:30 AM.
Thank you. I wanna go back, I wanna go back to the security rest of this for a second, because I only mentioned the elementary schools, and I don't wanna give anybody the idea that you're not paying attention to the others. We do have, the architect has done preliminary designs on the two middle schools. The board will be reviewing them within the next month or so, and starting to get that done. The high school process is a little more complicated because we're redesigning the facade, so probably not quite ready to look at that just yet. Doesn't make sense to do one part, one project without the other. But we will be tackling those also as soon as possible. Okay, now, Mrs. LaRosa will discuss the Health and Nutrition.
Sure. I am going to sub in to Ms. Fizada tonight, who is the committee's first one, Health and Nutrition Alliance. The committee held meeting on Tuesday, December 12th. Members present, Tim Moran, Rhonda Pratt, Shannon Morrow, Julie Nistra, Arlene Bev, Kristen Romney, Jessica Alston Beck, Sharon Carrigan, Ariam Savelin, and Priscilla Olson. They reviewed the financial report, which we have attached here. They are developing a newsletter, the committee is preparing it. In the newsletter will be information on adolescent mental health, social media, and vaping. Screenagers committee is committed to creating community awareness to the dangers of unrestricted use of digital devices, exploring ways to expose community and staff to screenagers, and exploring strategies to help adults implement healthy guidelines for digital use. New and old business, they discussed the student health and safety communication. Their next meeting will be Thursday, January 11th, 2018, 2018. 9:30 in the cafeteria at Paul J. Blue Elementary School.
Thank you, Mrs. LaRosa.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Duffy will discuss financial matters and business items.
Okay, Treasury Report, the balance in our accounts on September 30th is $41,152,786.69. And the balance in our accounts on October 31st is $38,265,026.69. Next item is budget transfers. We have a motion to approve budget transfer number 3439 to number 3449.
A motion. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion against.
Have motion to approve the health service contract, dear from school district, in the amount of $4,755.70.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion against.
Have motion to approve the contract with South Huntington School District for special ed services.
A motion. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion against.
We have some items to surplus, science textbooks for Beach and Udonro. We have some items to surplus, science textbooks for Beach and Udoro Schools. May I have a motion to approve that surplus?
So, second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McGinnis. Can I have a motion for the approval of the resolution regarding the destruction of unused and full ballot outlets? So, second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion for the approval of the memorandum agreement with wise? So, second. Discussion? Okay, so this is a new contract with the Clavicle unit. It's as pretty much all the other contracts. It's basically based on the CPI with a minimum of 1% and a maximum of 2%. It also adds a career increment and increases the career increment. It increases the retirement payout and it also increases the employee contribution to health insurance. Those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Geller. Hey, just a few things. First of all, I would like to thank members of our chamber orchestra for providing us with some beautiful music. This evening, as you enter, they will be performing their holiday concert on Wednesday evening. So if you liked what you heard, and I'm sure you did, I would like you to please join us on Wednesday evening at the high school at 7:30. You may or may not have noticed on our district website that our West Islip School District is one of 20 schools that are candidates for the Team Up for Community Service Challenge. I would encourage you to visit the website. Our contribution or the group that's involved, that enabled us to have this honor and even be involved in the competition is the Color Run and all of the hard work done by our Health and Wellness Alliance. So we are really very, very pleased that the good work and the charity work that's being done and the work that's being done to support health and wellness here in our community is being recognized. We have an opportunity to earn up to a $3,000 grant for the district. So I would encourage you to go on the website and vote, and vote as nigh on as you would like. And finally, I would like to wish everyone a very happy holiday season and a very joyful new year and good health and safe times to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Does anyone have anything? Okay.
Hi, hello. I'm Jane Moraska and I'm a member of the West Islip Robotics Team. And I came here on Friday today just to bring attention to really a momentous occasion for the representation of West Islip and more specifically, West Islip Robotics. So at the end of last month, I was invited by Zebra, which is a technology company on Long Island. There's a location in Homestead. And I was invited to speak there in front of the, in front of the local company for their town hall event, essentially. And it was me and a girl from Huntington, Abigail, who was essentially asked just to say the impact that robotics has had on us and how it's just valuable to the community as a whole. And we were asked to be there yesterday and we spoke in front of the company and met with the CBR afterwards. So I just wanted to bring attention really to the fact that Team 871 has been trying to get as much involvement in gaining recognition for the West Islip community and for really trying to set up higher standard of just excellence for what we can achieve. And we will also be, our, really, our person will be trying to work with Huntington Robotics to organize, help organize an event encouraging young women into engineering fields. So just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you very much. Just a very good night.
You may be interested to know that we had a little conversation the other day with Mrs. Burns and Dr. Ruland that you might be interested in, which is part of our Buildings and Grounds Committee, discussing another phase of some of the bond projects. So I don't know if you want to talk about that.
What we're trying to do is we recognize not only robotics, but robotics, but all of the STEM fields, science and technology fields, engineering fields, how important they are and how they open opportunities for students now. That's where there are many jobs, you know, in the public and private sectors now in those regards. So we're looking at our space allocation at the high school so that in recognition of the fact that we do know that robotics and many of the other areas in that technology department need more room to operate. So that is certainly something that's a priority to us and we're trying to move very quickly in that regard as well.
That's awesome to hear.
And on a little bit of a different note, I don't know if you would be willing, we actually have a girl scout that reached out to me this week, a high school student, who is looking to do her project, her goal project, on involving more girls in the STEM fields such as robotics. So would you mind if I gave her your name instead of something you just mentioned as well, getting more girls involved in that?
Of course, yes. And that event I was mentioning earlier, it was actually the girl from Huntington who spoke with me. She's essentially organizing a bunch of female engineers. So people who have worked, account engineering, really work whatever field. And she's having them go over to Huntington High School to speak to, secondly, middle age, middle school age girls and elementary school age girls, to try and help them understand the importance of, of course, getting into STEM fields. And then kind of giving the idea of how you would go about it.
And then that's exactly her project.
Yeah.
So that aligns great.
I would be more than glad about that.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session where we will discuss personnel negotiations and litigation? At the end of the session, the board will reconvene to public session in district office boardroom and consider any items which are voted required. Of course, all members of the public are welcome to attend this public session after executive. So, second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Happy holidays, everyone. Stay warm out there.